Okay, thank you all for coming tonight for the public hearing on the proposed amendments to the Village of Anmore zoning bylaw. This hearing is being held under the authority of section 464 of the Local Government Act. Council for the Village of Anmore has given first and second readings to zoning bylaw amendment number 651-2021 and directed that this public hearing be held. I will now ask Ms. Halliwell to confirm that the public hearing has been appropriately advertised and notice provided. Ms. Halliwell?
Thank you, Mayor. I can confirm that the public hearing has been appropriately advertised and notice provided.
Perfect. Staff will present a summary of the proposed bylaw and following the summary, the floor will be open to anyone in attendance that wishes to present his or her views on the proposed bylaw. Please note that this is not a question and answer period and it is not an opportunity to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw by council, staff, or others in attendance. We want to ensure that all attendees who wish to speak tonight are provided the opportunity to do so. If you wish to provide comments, please come to the podium when invited to do so and begin your presentation by clearly stating your name and address for the official record. A three-minute time limit will apply to each speaker and a second opportunity will be provided after everyone has been given a chance to provide comments for the first time. Before the public hearing concludes, I will make a call for speakers three times before concluding the hearing. Once the public hearing is concluded, the Local Government Act requires that council not accept any further input from the public related to the proposed amendment bylaw prior to the consideration of the next reading of the bylaw. I now ask Mr. Boyt, manager of Development Services, to present the zoning bylaw amendment. Mr. Boyt?
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, okay, I will, I will provide a general overview of this proposed zone. We refer to it as the infill development zone, or INF for short for the acronym. The purpose of this zone is intended to provide land solely for the purpose of one family residential housing as a principal use. There is a minimal parcel size of thirteen, thirteen forty-nine square meters. There is more information regarding how the parcel size is to be set within our Anmore policy sixty-one with regards to infill requirements. The maximum number of buildings and height within the zone will be one principal building per zone, a maximum height of ten meters, and one accessory building is structured, no larger, no higher than seven meters. There is a maximum floor ratio for the zone. It's a bit of a variation within the zone. This is to account for principal dwellings already existing on the property and to give some leeway in regards to being able to maintain that structure and not have to modify it if the dwelling is slightly larger than expected. Accessory building floor area, the floor area is not to exceed thirty percent of the total allowable floor area ratio for the parcel of land. The zone will allow coach houses but only on parcels of land of twenty-six ninety-five square meters or larger. The minimum building setbacks for the principal dwelling are seven point six for the front, for the rear it's seven point six, for the exterior side parcel setback it's five meters, and interior side parcel will be three meters. This will be the same for the principal and the accessory structure. Off-street parking shall be provided for all the dwellings within the zone, two parcels per one family dwelling, two parcels per secondary suite, and two parcels per coach house. The maximal parcel coverage shall be thirty-five percent of the overall parcel. Other regulations to consider will be the subdivision development control bylaw number 633-2020. And as part of the zoning bylaw amendment, the following plans shall be in, form integral part, so this is the four maps included within this zone. Highlight the four current proposals on the table for infill, which is twenty-one seventy-five East Road, one-two-five Hummingbird Drive, twenty-three forty-five Sunnyside Road, and twenty-one ten Sunnyside Road. And this has all been posted obviously within the papers and whatnot. We've picked the requirements as per the public hearing. That's a general outline of the zone.
Good, thank you. We will now open it up to, we did have one written submission. Do you want to read that out?
We just confirmed that we have indeed received one written submission after the agenda was published and it was forwarded to council and will be made part of the public record.
Okay, perfect. So I'll open it up for those who would like to speak in regards to the zoning bylaw amendment bylaw number 651-2021.
I live at twenty-three eighteen Sunnyside. I just have one question. I wasn't really clear, is this just for these four properties, this amendment? Or is that, is this whole bylaw amended now too?
Just the four.
Just four. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Not questions, sorry, just comments? I will now ask a second time, any comments regarding the proposed bylaw amendment number I will ask a third and final time, is there any comments regarding bylaw amendment number 651-2021? Seen none? Could I get a motion to close the public hearing? Moved, seconded, any discussion? Seen none? All those in favor? Opposed? Kehrdine Assey. Thank you, everybody. We have a little bit of a break here for twenty-five minutes then until we get ready to start our regular council meeting. Yep.
If I could grab everybody's attention for a second, I didn't realize that the regular council meeting is supposed to start. It's been written in the notes that it will start immediately after the public hearing. So we'll start at about quarter to seven then, that's all right for everybody, just to get a little bit of a break.
council meeting is supposed to start. It's been written in the notes that it will start immediately after the public hearing. So we'll start at about quarter to seven then, that's all right for everybody, just to get a little bit of a break. Okay, we'll move on to delegations. We don't have any minutes, minutes of the regular council meeting held on November 2nd, 2021. Could I get someone to move those minutes? Moved, seconded, any discussion? Seen none? All those in favor? Opposed? Kehrdine Assey. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Seen none? Okay, we'll move on to consented, we don't have a consent agenda, so we'll move on now to the legislative reports. And she just walked in. Thank you, perfect timing. We were going to amend the agenda but we're just going to follow through. Are you fine to, to speak to this right now? Thank you, Lena. Okay, Ms. Martin, we have the Anmore Five-Year Financial Plan Amendment bylaw, report dated November 10th, 2021, from Lena Martin, our manager of financial services. Ms. Martin?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The purpose of this report is to amend the Anmore Five-Year Financial Plan bylaw, number 642. It is recommended that council give first, second, and third reading to the Anmore Five-Year Financial Plan Amendment bylaw, number 654. The community charter states that a municipality must have a financial plan bylaw that is adopted annually and that the financial plan may be amended by bylaw at any time. The Village of Anmore adopted the Five-Year Financial Plan bylaw on March 16th of 2021. A subsequent Anmore Five-Year Financial Plan Amendment bylaw was adopted on May 18th, 2021. At the Finance Committee meeting held on Thursday, November 4th, additional adjustments to the budget were recommended to council. These adjustments are included in the amendment bylaw. Amendment, the amendment bylaw number, sorry, the Anmore Five-Year Financial Plan Amendment bylaw 648 is replaced by the Anmore Five-Year Financial Plan Amendment bylaw 654. The previous amendment bylaw was noted as the current tax year of 2021, however, it was meant as an amendment to the previous tax year 2020 after the year-end audit. That's just to show why there's such a difference between these two amendments. The Anmore Five-Year Financial Plan Amendment bylaw 654 adjusts the transfers to and from reserves for 2021 and reclasses current operating surplus to other projects. That's it.
Good, thank you. And there's a resolution.
I can read that for you, Mayor.
Sure.
The recommendation is that council give first, second, and third reading to Anmore Five-Year Financial Plan Amendment bylaw, number 654-2021.
Someone to move that? Moved, seconded, I'll open up for discussion, anybody? Counselor Weaver?
Just a quick, quick question. I mean, I know we discussed this in detail at the Finance Committee meeting. Maybe it's just a procedural thing, it says recommended option that council give first, second, and third reading to Anmore Five-Year Financial Plan Amendment bylaw, number 654-2021.
It is typically just the options that are available to council. So the recommended option is the one that we present and then there's other options that are usually presented as well.
Okay, even if they're the same?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have.
Good, okay, seen nothing? I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Kehrdine Assey. Thank you. Your timing was impeccable. We'll now move on to legislative reports, 9B zoning bylaw amendment number 651-2021, infill developments. And you'll have to just give a reason for your recusing, Mr.?
Despite the end of speaking, sir.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Halliwell?
Thank you. So this is the public hearing that occurred previous to this regular council meeting today and the recommendation before council is that council give third reading to Anmore zoning amendment bylaw, number 651-2021.
Someone to move that? Moved, seconded, I'll open up for any discussion? Anybody? Counselor Weaver?
Just a quick, quick question. I mean, I know we discussed this in detail at the Finance Committee meeting. Maybe it's just a procedural thing, it says recommended option that council give first, second, and third reading to Anmore Five-Year Financial Plan Amendment bylaw, number 654-2021. And it also says the same thing in other options, the exact same statement. Is that normal?
It is typically just the options that are available to council. So the recommended option is the one that we present and then there's other options that are usually presented as well.
Okay, even if they're the same?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have.
Good, okay, seen nothing? I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Kehrdine Assey. Thank you. Your timing was impeccable. We'll now move on to legislative reports, 9B zoning bylaw amendment number 651-2021, infill developments. And you'll have to just give a reason for your recusing, Mr.?
Despite the end of speaking, sir.
Okay, Ms. Halliwell?
Thank you. So this is the public hearing that occurred previous to this regular council meeting today and the recommendation before council is that council give third reading to Anmore zoning amendment bylaw, number 651-2021.
Someone to move that? Moved, seconded, I'll open up for any discussion? Seen none? I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Kehrdine Assey. Okay.
She's gone. She's gone.
He's right out the front door.
Probably. Okay, we'll now move on to 9C Anmore Procedure bylaw, electronic meetings. Ms. Halliwell?
So this is a consideration of adoption of the previously presented Anmore Procedure bylaw and the recommendation is that council adopt Anmore Procedure bylaw amendment bylaw, number 653-2021.
Okay, someone to move that? Moved, seconded, I'll open up for discussion? Anybody? No? Call the question then, all those in favor? Opposed? Kehrdine Assey. We're now on to unfinished business. Ms. Halliwell again, communications and community engagement policy, number 70.
Thank you, Mayor McEwen. So this policy is coming forward to council again. It was previously presented at a couple of regular council meetings back in July and there were the, the policy and consideration of it was tabled. So there have not been any changes made to the policy since it was last distributed to council. It's here for your consideration and we also have our communications consultant, Ms. Michelson, here to provide any answers to questions you may have or, or comments you might have on the policy and I'll open it up to any questions.
Good, well, let's, is there a recommendation? Okay, that the council approved communications and community engagement policy, number 70? Could I get someone to move that? Moved, seconded, and I'll open up Counselor Carr.
Thanks, Mayor McEwen, and thanks, Ms. Halliwell and Ms. Michelson, for allowing us a little bit of extra time to review this and I appreciate the other supporting documents that you sent along. I've had a chance to look at everything and this is great. I just have a couple of points of clarification. On page forty-two of the agenda package, which is page five of the policy, the very last paragraph, I just want to clarify that when individual members of council publish or comment via personal social media or traditional communications, they should identify that they are expressing their personal views and not the views of the village or council as a whole. This would just be if we're commenting on anything that's happening in the village or pertaining to anything that would have been, say, posted on the village's social media sites, correct?
Yeah, the idea behind that is just that there's only the, a primary spokesperson for the village and then, but the rest of council still needs to be able to have its voice. So it's related to village matters.
Absolutely.
Not every time you post.
No, that's good. Just wanted to clarify and I, and I knew the answer but I just wanted to make sure that it was crystal clear. One other point of clarification would be on the next page, page six, and it is the under media relations after the bullet point. It speaks to individuals acting as spokespeople for the village are required to use their official titles and it goes on to say media relations outside of the village, including interviews involving business or volunteer organizations must be kept separate and individuals are responsible for ensuring that their village titles are not used. And I completely understand that this would be during an interview, say, on TV where it gives your title underneath your picture, but oftentimes in some of these interviews that I've been involved in, I know, and I know others that have, that sit at the council table, they may state, state in the news story that you're also a councillor or the mayor of the Village of Anmore. I mean, should we discourage that or is it, I mean, that's just kind of a byproduct of what we do and we wouldn't want that, for example, the work that I do with the homeless. I often am interviewed for different media sites and sometimes that leaks into the story. Should we discourage that or?
So, should I go ahead?
Okay.
So the, um, there's, there's kind of, you can't control what the media does.
Right.
So there's kind of that intent behind it. So when you're doing your interviews, if you are introducing yourself as a councillor on something that's not village business, that's different, but if they put it in there, that, you know, we can never control what they do.
No.
So it's mostly just to make sure that everybody's aware, when you're doing an interview for your business or your other non-village work, that you're just saying, hey, just to be clear for the reporter, I'm not here as a council member, I'm here as...
Perfect. That's all I wanted, I just wanted to clarify that and thanks again for all of your work on this, I appreciate it.
Good, any other comments? Okay, well, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Kehrdine Assey. Okay, we're now on to eleven, that was ten, eleven, new business school. The recommendation is that council give first, second, and third reading to Ann Moore five-year financial plan amendment by law number six five four dash two thousand and twenty-one.
Someone to move that? Moved, seconded. I'll open up for discussion. Anybody? Counsel Weber.
Just a quick question. I mean, I know we discussed this in detail at the finance committee meeting. Maybe it's just a procedural thing. It says recommended option that council give first, second, and third reading to Ann Moore five-year financial plan amendment by law six fifty-four to two thousand and twenty-one. And it also says the same thing in other options. The exact same statement. Is that normal?
It is typically just the options that are available to council. So the recommended option is the one that we present, and then there's other options that are usually presented as well.
Okay, even if they're the same?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Good. Okay. See nothing. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Karyden Nasri. Thank you. Your timing was impeccable. We'll now move on to legislative reports. Nine B zoning by law amendment number six five one dash two thousand and twenty-one, infill developments. And you'll have to just give a reason for your recusing, Mr.? Okay. Okay, Ms. Halliwell.
Thank you. So this is the public hearing that occurred previous to this regular council meeting today, and the recommendation before council is that council give third reading to Ann Moore zoning amendment by law number six five one dash two thousand and twenty-one.
Someone to move that? Moved, seconded. I'll open up for any discussion. Seen that? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Karyden Nasri. Okay.
She's gone.
She's gone.
He's right out the front door.
Probably. Okay, we'll now move on to nine C Ann Moore procedure by law, electronic meetings. Ms. Halliwell.
So this is a consideration of adoption of the previously presented Ann Moore procedure by law. And the recommendation is that council adopt Ann Moore procedure by law amendment by law number six five three dash two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, someone to move that? Moved, seconded. I'll open up for discussion. Anybody? No? Call the question then. All those in favor? Opposed? Karyden Nasri. We're now on to unfinished business. Ms. Halliwell again. Communications and community engagement policy number seventy.
Thank you, Mayor McEwen. So this policy has coming forward to council again. It was previously presented at a couple of regular council meetings back in July. And there were the, the, the policy and consideration of it was tabled. So there have not been any changes made to the policy since it was last distributed to council. It's here for your consideration, and we also have our communications consultant, Ms. Michelson here to provide any answers to questions you may have or, or comments you might have on the policy, and I'll open it up to any questions.
Good. Well, let's, is there a, a recommendation? Okay, that the council approved communications and community engagement policy number seventy? Can I get someone to move that? Moved, seconded, and I'll open up Counsel Cray.
Thanks, Mayor McEwen, and thanks, Ms. Halliwell and Ms. Michelson for allowing us a little bit of extra time to review this, and I appreciate the other supporting documents that you sent along. I've had a chance to look at everything, and this is great. I just have a couple of points of clarification. On page forty-two of the agenda package, which is page five of the policy, the very last paragraph, I just want to clarify that when individual members of council publish or comment via personal social media or traditional communications, they should identify that they are expressing their personal views and not the views of the village or council as a whole. This would just be if we're commenting on anything that's happening in the village or pertaining to anything that would have been, say, posted on the village's social media sites, correct?
Yeah, the idea behind that is just that there's only the, a primary spokesperson for the village. And then, but the rest of council still needs to be able to have its voice. So it's related to village matters.
Yeah, absolutely.
Not every time you post.
No, that's good. Just wanted to clarify. And I, and I, I knew the answer, but I just wanted to make sure that it was crystal clear. One other point of clarification would be on the next page, page six, and it is the under media relations after the bullet point. It speaks to individuals acting as spokespeople for the village are required to use their official titles. And it goes on to say media relations outside of the village, including interviews involving business or volunteer organizations must be kept separate. And individuals are responsible for ensuring that their village titles are not used. And I completely understand that this would be during an interview, say, on TV where it gives your title underneath your picture. But oftentimes in some of these interviews that I've been involved in, I know, and I know others that have, that sit at the council table, they may state, state in the news story that you're also a councillor or the mayor of the village of Ann Moore. I mean, should we discourage that? Or is it, I mean, that's just kind of a byproduct of what we do, and we wouldn't want that, for example, the work that I do with the homeless. I often am interviewed for different media sites, and sometimes that leaks into the story. Should we discourage that? Or?
So, should I go ahead?
Okay.
So the, um, there's, there's kind of, you can't control what the media does. So there's kind of that intent behind it. So when you're doing your interviews, if you are introducing yourself as a councillor on something that's not village business, that's different. But if they put it in there.
Right.
That, you know, we can never control what they do. So it's mostly just to make sure that everybody's aware when you're doing an interview for your business or your other non-village work, that you're just saying, hey, just to be clear for the reporter, I'm not here as a council member, I'm here as.
Perfect. That's all I wanted. I just wanted to clarify that, and thanks again for all of your work on this. I appreciate it.
Good. Any other comments? Okay, well, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Karyden Nasri. Okay, we're now on to eleven, that was ten, eleven, new business school district forty-three mental health task force. Ms. Halliwell.
Thank you, Mayor McEwen. So this is in reference to a letter that was received by the school district forty-three. It's page forty-five of your agenda packages. And there has been a request for each of the municipalities within the tri-city area to appoint a representative on the mental health task force for, for the school district. I believe this is similar to the childcare task force that recently wrapped up. And so this person on council would act as a liaison to the school district through their work with the mental health task force. And it's open for consideration to council if anyone would like to put their name forward or if council would like to appoint anyone at all.
I'd like to nominate Counsel Cray or choose who's up to it.
Well, I fully anticipated that, and I would be happy to take this on.
Then the recommendation would read that council appoint Counsel Cray as council liaison to the school district forty-three mental health task force. Can I get someone to move that? Moved, seconded. Any discussion? Seen that? All those in favor? Opposed? Karyden Nasri. And thank you for representing us so well. Eleven B draft Metro two thousand and fifty referral for comment. Ms. Halliwell.
Thank you, Mayor McEwen. So this is coming back forward. It had originally been presented back in September as a, as a letter that had been received by Metro Vancouver requesting any comments by council. And at the time, they deferred the decision, and with the deadline coming up for November the twenty-sixth, this is back in front of council for consideration if you do wish to provide any comment to Metro Vancouver in relation to the draft regional growth strategy update. Or, and if you do, what that, what that commentary might be so that staff can forward on the comments to Metro Vancouver.
Good. Okay. Any, any? Counsel Weber.
Well, I have one comment. There is, there was a statement that talks about, you know, and I agree with this for the most part, that, you know, Metro Vancouver wants to develop in the urban containment boundary. While most communities in Metro Vancouver have urban areas, they have city centers, they have transit hubs. Ann Moore doesn't. We're a rural area. So it, it's very hard to meet that criteria and then meet some of the other ones, support affordable housing, bolstering climate change and natural hazard resilience, even climate change, building on one acre lots. It's not really responsible in that regard. So I, I just, I think the whole thing I have, problem I have with this, it just doesn't apply to Ann Moore. I, I don't think they were thinking of Ann Moore, Belkara, or Lions Bay, which is also part of Metro Vancouver, which is actually urban, an urban designation. So I just don't think they were considering Ann Moore and our future, and it's just full of contradictions. That would be my only comment back to them. It would be nice if it kind of addressed the villages and what we're trying to do here.
Any other? Counsel Trowbridge.
Yeah, I think I, I'm in support of that completely. It's, it's an important concept because they're, they're a little generic, and I understand why. But there are different dynamics here, given that typically rural areas are far removed from urban centers. In our case, we're surrounded by them. So if, if they could, you know, sort of rejig something a little more specific that we could latch on to, it'd be pretty helpful.
Yeah, and as I said earlier with the question in public input, I did have a wholesome conversation today with Ms. McNell from Metro Vancouver. And a couple of things that she noted was is that, you know, traditionally rural is producing the food and that, and like Counsel Weber said, that there is, there is things that don't really reply in, in Metro two thousand and fifty. I am also been told by my other colleagues that it's probably not going to move forward at this point because of the timing and some of the big, the big challenges that some of the bigger municipalities have with the Metro two thousand and fifty. One of the things I did ask her, though, was about there, just some clarification that I had a resident yesterday, actually, who I was talking on the phone, asked me about this rural-urban regarding special study areas. And I said, well, one of the, one of the things that would be interesting, because there's a bit of ambiguity in regards to the Ann Moore South property. And she said very specifically that if, with it being a special study area, it could become rural, or it could become urban and have no effect on the rest of the municipality in regards that it would still remain rural. So she was very clear with that. So that's something that, that I wasn't absolutely a hundred percent on, and she clarified that with me. But she said it is up for a lot of interpretation because, as Counsel Weber said, Lions Bay is actually considered urban. They're having a conversation right now because they are so in sense, they don't have natural gas, they don't have metro water, and they're wanting to be able to rely more on wood burning stoves. And that is a contradiction in regards to the urban containment boundary in some aspects. So it is an interesting thing, and so they're having a discussion about that. So there is going to be a lot of discussions. This has to be approved unanimously by everybody throughout the, the region. So that's twenty-one municipalities and, and territories. So I think it's going to be a challenge to get done, and I've heard that it, it'll probably be in January, we'll be put on, put on ice. But it would be fair to say that at this point, we do have some concerns regarding how it really applies to us, and it kind of contradicts itself in various, various conversations that, that go through the report. So Counsel Trowbridge.
Quick question, just for my edification. So the twenty-one municipalities, would this be the same in other things where those are weighted votes?
One hundred percent sign-on by everybody, every municipality.
But weighted? Or is one vote, one vote?
One municipality does not approve of whatever is in Metro two thousand and fifty, and it doesn't move forward. That was the same with two thousand and forty. And we actually were one of the last holdouts in two thousand and forty because we were looking for a semi-rural designation of the Ann Moore Southlands, and they wouldn't. Because, as we all know, semi-rural means so many different things to so many different people. So.
Any other questions in that? No? Okay. Okay, so do you have?
So just for clarification, then, council would want us to provide a comment back in regards to development in the urban containment boundary as it relates to Ann Moore, Belkara, and Lions Bay, and the contradictory nature where there's rural areas that are geographically, that the intent is for the Metro two thousand and fifty to talk about rural areas that are geographically far away from urban centers as opposed to those three communities, which are in fact very close.
Yep.
Yeah. Sorry, and how to address, you know, if, if we're a rural community and we stay rural, how do we address some of these goals in Metro two thousand and fifty? Like transit oriented, you know, transit centers and density and affordable housing and stuff like that. So it really, you can't have, they can't have both, right?
Good. Okay, we'll move on then to Light Up Spirit Park. Council to discuss feasibility and scope of event of two thousand and twenty-one. Now, this was interesting that this was on the agenda because I think, was it two nights ago? We received, I, myself and Counsel Cray received a letter from Georgia Lyons regarding the Candy Cane Lane that happened last year in Ravenswood. And it was, it was a pretty big success. A lot of people came through there, and a lot of the, the neighbors got involved in it and decorating their houses with lights. It, it ties in well with the Light Up Spirit Park, which we are still planning on doing, and I believe most of the lights are already up in the trees right now, ready for our lighting up ceremony. But I guess we want to have a discussion with council twofold, is what do we see the event this year during these pandemic times? And I did send a letter back to, to Ms. Lyons regarding a couple, a couple issues. What she was wanting to see in regards to the village involvement. Last year, the village didn't really have a lot of involvement in it because, again, during a pandemic, we didn't, we weren't able to really promote anything in regards that would bring people together. I also asked her about what does the neighborhood feel like in regards to approval? Do they want to all be on board with this again? Last year, she, I believe she, her charity, the sponsor was the Eagle Ridge Hospital, and I asked if, if that's the same case this year. And then, and then the fourth thing I asked as well is that there's been recently a lot of concern about from some of, from her neighbors in regards to traffic issues and drawing people into the village. So I'm waiting for a response back on, on that. But I, I, I do hope that she does move forward with it and that. But I just wanted to maybe, Ms. Counsel Cray, if you wanted to just talk about what your committee has, has conversed about the Light Up Spirit Park and the Christmas festivities.
Thanks, Mayor McEwen. We haven't had a lot of conversation about it simply because of the pandemic and the fact that cases have not really settled down, although the last couple of days, it sounds like they've slowed down a little bit. So we have a meeting coming up. Yeah. So we will be talking about it, but I would like to gauge how everyone feels about gathering. I don't think it can look like it did several years ago with everybody congregating around the fire and all of that. I know that we're thrilled that we're having extra lights, and we're excited to see that. So I'd like to gauge how everyone else feels about it, about, you know, what it could be similar to what we had hoped to do for Ma Murray Day, which was a little bit more of a safe agenda of things to do. I don't know how that looks. We are outside, so that's good. Difficult, of course, to check vaccine passports. I'm not, I haven't checked lately to see exactly where the gathering, the number of people that can gather inside versus outside is. So do you have a sense?
I believe it's in the thousands for outside gatherings. So and the, the gathering generally has been put up back to full capacity, except for in the Fraser Valley in specific regions.
That's good to hear. I don't know. What does everyone think? Does everyone have some thoughts on it?
Counsel Weber.
If it can be done safely and we follow the rules, I would like to do it. It's not, I, I think it's popular. A lot of people come out, but I don't think we'd get anywhere near a thousand people. So it is outside. There is a fire. It's generally cold. And they, they are starting to allow more and more gatherings. So it would be nice to, if we're allowed to do it and we can do it safely, it'd be nice to do it.
Counsel Wetherings.
I'm a little bit concerned over the, the COVID variations that are starting to develop. Like England was very safe at one stage. But now the, the COVID variants are starting to take over and more people are getting sick. Although we're in pretty good shape in Canada, particularly British Columbia, I could see it happening maybe here. So I sort of echo Counsel, Counsel Wetherings' position that if we can do it sensibly, safely rather, we should consider it.
Counsel Trowbridge.
Yeah, I mean, it, we probably can't, you know, have small tables giving out chocolate and hot chocolate and stuff because that tends to group people up. But I'm sure there's a way to keep distanced and get it done. I'd, I'd hate to see it canceled. If, and I'm, I'm with Paul, I, you know, if we can figure it out so that it's safe for people, I don't want to put anyone at risk, of course, but I, I think we need to try and do it.
I, I, I think the challenge that we're going to face is that we had, you know, in, in previous years, pre-COVID, we had a fairly significant involvement from the SASSMant Volunteer Fire Department. They, they delivered Santa on the, on the fire truck. We had a horse-drawn carriage that we had to book through Stanley Park, which I think may be too late to do that, but it also, it makes the space very confined in regards to people were on that, to be able to participate in that. So I, I'm, I think what we should do is we should refer this, if, if your committee is meeting next week, is to really hear what your committee has to say and maybe research some of the things that we could do. Maybe it's, maybe it's a big bonfire, and we, we use our PA system and we have Christmas carols or something like that, or we've, sorry, in the previous, we'd also ask the elementary school if they wanted their choir to come up and sing Christmas carols as well. So I think that we need to do a little bit of research at this, sort of the eleventh hour to see what we can, we, we could get and see if it works. So does that make any sense?
It makes perfect sense. And just looking at my calendar, we're not meeting until December ninth. So there is that. What is the date that we landed on? Was it the fifth?
Typically, they'd be the first Sunday in December, and that's the fifth.
And I do believe we have put a hold on the carriage rides, but that one is a little concerning. That's very close quarters unless we limit the number of people. But we have such a hard time getting everyone in that wants to ride on the carriage on a regular, yeah, yeah. But I know that there's no financial hit if we cancel him, but based on our long-term, long-term relationship that we've had with him, I think we, we do have that reserved. But yeah, I mean, big bonfire. We would set the hay bales and thinking out loud with my event manager hat on. You know, we could set it up in such a way that the hay bales aren't touching each other. They're, you know, and families are going to group together. I, but.
We used to have two food trucks as well show up as well for people to.
Yeah, and we did the mulled wine and the cocoa.
The professional food trucks are.
They're ready for that, yeah. Can we have a conversation?
Yeah, we certainly can. We can, we can certainly look to, you know, add some of these elements to, to an event like that. I, I think I would probably recommend we'd want to touch base with the SASSMant Volunteer Fire Department just to check in on some of the ideas.
Yeah.
And then also, in terms of serving food, I think it would probably be better to avoid that for this year. And if we do have an opportunity to bring some food trucks up, then we could help them serving, like you said, Counsel Trowbridge. They're, they're already all up with the requirements for serving food through COVID and things like that. So I think if council does want to move forward with an event that is maybe pared down a little bit, the other consideration is while we do have our events coordinator sort of still on standby, because we've canceled all of the other events this year, I, I don't know of her availability at this point in time. And so it might be, she may or may not be available to help organize everything.
Well, perhaps we can also reach out to her. We could, we could start a communication thread with the CC committee and gauge their interest. I mean, it does take a fair amount of volunteer hours depending on what we're going to do. We have to think, we have to have a conversation quickly, though, because it's, it's coming up in three weeks.
Well, that's, and, and then as well, one of the big things is we had, we were so fortunate, Lori Bennett's father always partook in, in Santa. And he retired two years ago. So, but anyway, I think, I think a discussion has been had at the committee level, and then we can, if we need to, we can get an emergency council meeting scheduled to, to discuss it further if, you know, something that comes forward. So. And it'll be also interesting to see what, what Ms. Lyons comes back with as well in regards to tie in with, with Spirit Park. So. Okay, well, we'll leave it in your capable hands then. We have the items from committee, the finance committee, November fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. At the November fourth, two thousand and twenty-one finance committee meeting, the following recommendations were made. Ms. Halliwell.
Yes, thank you, Mayor McEwen. So there were four recommendations that were made by finance committee. And the recommendation that we would make tonight at the council meeting is that council endorse the recommendations made at the November fourth, two thousand and twenty-one finance committee as shown on the agenda.
Can I get someone to move those? Moved, seconded. Open up for discussion. Seen that? All those in favor? Opposed? Karyden Nasri. Okay, move on to the mayor's report. I just have one thing to say in the recent weather event. I, I, I can't put enough thanks into the people of Ann Moore and for keeping the catch bases clean and their ditches clean, and also our public works department who, who did yeoman's work in regards to, to, to making sure there was no floods or washouts in our village. I also want to commend this, this council, which in September two thousand and eighteen, they approved a storm water management plan at a cost of two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. And it assessed all drainage, culverts, ditches, storm drains, et cetera, in the village. And basically, put a report together of necessary steps and improvements needed, and we've fulfilled all of those. And I think it certainly puts us in the position that we are in today and, and the fortunate position that we, we, we haven't had any big washouts and that. It was an unprecedented amount of rain, and we do have a lot of creeks and, and drainage culverts that, that take that rainwater coming down off the mountain. So it was, it was really unbelievable what we, what we saw over the last couple of days. So you know, the foresight of the. Um, you know, the foresight of this council to, to put this into place has really paid dividends, and I just, I think it was a, a very paramount, so. I'll now move on to councilors' reports, Counselor Webber.
Just one thing, uh, my heart goes out to all the families in the interior of BC that have been flooded out, uh, were affected by the landslides. Uh, it's just unbelievable that, you know, a rain event like that can cause that much damage that quickly. So I mean, we're very fortunate to live here and on the high ground with well-managed storm water, um, I, I heard of a few flooded basements in Anmore, but. Nothing disastrous, so anyway, I just wanted to say that.
Everybody's safe. Counselor Crowe.
Thank you, uh, just a couple of things, uh, healthier community partnerships, one of the tables that I am representative for. The village on, we are having our final steering committee meeting, which is all of the municipalities that get together along with Fraser Health. And uh, we'll be setting our goals for next year as far as how to bring all five of our municipalities together. And one common uh, focus for making healthier communities, that's next week on Monday. And then also a week Saturday is the Crossroads Hospice Treasures of Christmas Virtual Gala. And myself along with Counselor Diana Dilworth from the city of Port Moody and Minister of Finance Selena Robinson. Have a small part that we play, we have emceed the event in the past, but this year we are passing the torch to a new diva. Uh, is what uh, what we're doing, and if anyone has ever had anything. To do with Crossroads Hospice Society, it is an amazing organization that supports people uh, as they transition. Uh, through end of life care, and not only are they a large support for the person who is actually. Uh, in end of life, the family, they support the family before, during, and even after, and it's an amazing organization. And it's a one-hour virtual gala, I think it's ten dollars on Saturday, the, a week Saturday, the twenty-seventh. So uh, it's from six to seven o'clock, and it's just a very heart, a heartfelt hour of uh, stories and music. And if anyone has an opportunity, you can just go to their website and pick up a ticket, it's uh, it's a great cause for our community, and that's it. And they have an online silent auction, you can buy a song or something, and yeah, it's a, I think you've.
It's a way to contribute.
Yeah, and you've been a part of the galas as well, yeah, it's lovely.
Good, any other, okay, I'll move on then to the Chief Administrative Officer's report.
Thank you, thank you Mayor McEwen, um, just one thing to note really, we've had a couple of reports uh, from residents who are concerned about some um. Power poles that are downed on North Sunnyside, down towards First Avenue. So if you're heading down towards First, they're on the right-hand side as you come around the corner, we have had BC Hydro, they are aware of them, they're not posing any danger, they're not live. Um, so they will come in and repair as, as they can prioritize the work, um, but we did have um, staff follow up immediately after, after we noticed.
Good, okay, we have some uh, uh, information items, minutes of the Finance Committee meeting held on February first. Communications dated October twenty-ninth, Ministry of Children and Family Development, uh, Metro Vancouver Board and Brief, uh, communications from the Bard Inlet Marine Society. Um, I'm now gonna open up for public question period, but I'm gonna stress please that these should be general questions of council, not um. Commentary, um, I, I have opened up and I am available by appointment. Um, if people have concerns, questions, would like to express their thoughts and that, please reach out. And I will come and have coffee with the mayor, and I look forward to meeting with as many people, it's, it's happened quite a few. I think a few people in here have taken me up previously where we sit down and just have a very informal candid conversation about things in the village. Or people express their viewpoints, which I, I appreciate hearing, so I'm gonna again, open it up for public question period. But if we could keep it to brief questions and not, uh, it's not a conversation per se, so please. Oh, sorry, and thank you for your patience, yeah.
Thank you, um, Joubin Jalili, um, fifteen oh one Crystal Creek. So as I said, Counselor Trowbridge, last time when uh, one of the attendees uh, referenced. Ms. Mickelson's executive summary report with respect to public engagement, by referencing that majority of the. Of the participants were against uh, change of designation of Anmore South. To uh, to urban, you mentioned that that was not, you know, majority, it was thirty-three percent. I brought, brought the report as I promised, and I brought one copy for you as well. Um, I'm going to read, you know, pieces of that. The majority of this is the.
This is exactly what, do you have a question?
There is a question at the end, yeah.
You have two minutes, just so that.
Sure, the majority of participants in the community engagement for Anmore South. Do not support moving forward with an urban designation at this time. Participants consistently shared that they value the unique aspects of Anmore, want to protect its character. And are very concerned about how Anmore South development could detract from the aspects of Anmore they value. There are serious concerns about traffic congestion and lack of alternate routes, and they want to preserve green space. And forested areas in the community, did you read this report, Mr. Webber?
Yes, of course, um, I'm gonna turn it over in a second to Therese, who is the author of the report. And make sure we understand a couple of things, firstly, um, my point was that. Uh, I think you and others, and if not you, I apologize, but are, are using the report incorrectly. By saying that the majority of the residents are opposed to the urban designation. That's not what the report says, the report says that a majority of the participants are not in favor of moving ahead at this time. Uh, it's, it's my turn now, um, and so. The mischaracterization that the population of Anmore is opposed to the urban designation is what I have a problem with. And I also said that it wasn't even a majority that were opposed, it was roughly thirds. A third opposed, a third in favor, and a third that wanted more information. So it wasn't a poll, so we can't use that data, I know Therese has said that to me before. But I think I'm characterizing that correctly, and I'll ask Therese, given that she's the author and the authority to have her comments.
But may I say one thing?
Please, let's just, let's let her fish.
Sure.
So I think one of the biggest things that's happening, and I will qualify, this is not everyone who cites the first sentence of an executive summary. But what's happening is that context is that people are presenting it, is that the community and the majority of the respondents support remaining rural. And that is actually not what we heard, what we heard was the majority of the respondents, and keep in mind, less than a hundred households. So that's another really important thing, respondents, not community-wide, but that, that they were, what they were saying was not at this time. So there were people who said, yeah, I, I support urban, I think it's a great thing, but not right now because we feel it's too rushed. So if we put ourselves back to where we were in the spring, council was looking at and considering moving forward with an OCP amendment in April to June. And what we heard clearly, even from those who supported urban, was yes, we think urban's good, but it's rushed. We want more information, we want more studies, we want to hear a little bit more about what it could actually look like. There was questions that were things like zoning, what is zoning, we tried to explain that the designation is very different from zoning. So all those things said, yeah, okay, we get that, so we just want more, there was another group, as you said, that said, maybe, but not with more information. So it's very misleading if, if people read the statement and then they cite the statement in a context of saying, everyone wants rural. Because that's not actually accurate, the other thing that I've noticed is the at this time. So at this time was March twenty twenty-one, and it's being cited as though it's at this time, fall twenty twenty-one. So again, for that context, the big question, and those who participated will remember, is that we went through and we shared, here's council's priorities. Here's, here's the strategic plan, here's what's council's thinking, tell us what you think, so if you didn't participate. The bulk of the consultation was actually open-ended questions, because it really was a discussion, what are your priorities, community, what do you want to see? So again, not a poll, but the thing that's, that we were presenting was also, based on what we hear, council was gonna make a decision. Whether it was gonna go forward in April to June, and so what we heard consistently from the participants was not at this time. As in, not in April to June, and so my concern are those two pieces, that, that my report is being taken. To be used to say, everyone said, no, everybody wants rural, that's not what they said, what they said was not yet, and we heard that in a mix. So I think, you know, your summary was accurate around it, and I have seen some um, of the posts where they've quoted that first sentence. And they have included the next three sentences, which is great, because that explains there's more to the story, people want more studies. They want council to make its mind up, and then council made its decision, put it on hold, do more studies. So that, um, I hope that explains it, but there is, there's a big difference between saying that sentence means everybody supports rural. That does a disservice to the residents who participated and said otherwise.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Is it related to?
It is related.
Okay, just quickly.
Thank you very much, I respect that, nobody's denying that, all I'm saying is that, and that's how I started my conversation. I said majority of the participants per this report at that time, you're just quoting what you professionally put out. As a report from your consulting firm, okay, nothing else.
Thank you.
And by the same token, nobody can prove that now the majority of the people may have different opinion. Until we have a referendum, which is what we have been asking from this council, nobody can tell. That because I can't set up, you know, so many sessions, that they call it huge community engagement, which is completely nonsense. It's not clear that people, majority of the people want this.
Question, thank you, thank you, thank you. You can pull it.
Can I just? Um, am I able to read something that Bill had to go on a call out?
We, is it a question?
It's, it's a statement and a question at the end, it's very quick.
Question, if you can.
Okay, well, I just have to say that he, he spoke with someone today, a resident. Oh, sorry, sorry, thank you, Jody Cook, Jody Summers Cook, sixteen sixty East Road. Um, so Bill, Bill spoke with somebody today, uh, a resident of Anmore that had a group meeting with Icana. And they were told that they, Icana is expecting to have four thousand units in Anmore South. And Bill repeated this to him and had him repeat it back, and the fellow said to Icana, I assume that's about ten thousand people. They did not answer that, so my question, or Bill's question, sorry, is that will council put a cap on the number of units? Should we go to that designation or number of people that will be in Anmore South?
I will tell you, my personal view is if there isn't a diversity, I, I would have to see the whole thing before I can even, it's ridiculous, those numbers, in my view.
Okay, well, this is an Anmore resident, and I, we just spoke to, we just spoke to another one.
Yeah, I've never heard any of it, I've never seen any of it, so I, I can't answer it, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I'm not asking you to clarify it, I'm just saying, will council put a cap? If Icana comes and says, okay, we want to put in five thousand units, now units is a unit, we don't know, is a unit maybe a townhome, an apartment? I'm just saying, that, this kind of concerns us.
It concerns me too.
Okay, perfect, so maybe I can get something in writing from, from um, from this person, thank you.
It would concern all of council, thank you, any other questions? Name an address, please.
Well done, well done, John.
Thank you.
Nancy Maloney, seventeen twenty-four East Road, and um. I had two things, but I'll do one and then maybe come back a second time, so this is a totally different topic, but I think I'm correct. That Coquitlam for Light to Lake, which has happened for many years, has decided to not actually have any events. Um, to still have the Light to Lake display, but not any gatherings, as Coquitlam concluded that given COVID. This is not a safe thing to be doing, um, and I know other people are probably aware, we're hoping. Uh, well, probably everyone is hoping that five to eleven-year-olds will be approved for vaccinations, this has already happened in the States. But it probably won't happen here until December, um, so there's that issue, and I think Port Moody, I may have read. That Port Moody might have done the same thing, you know, for their um, usual event on the pier, that the lights will happen, the event will not happen.
And I think with both those things, that they will look at that in regard to our council question.
Could Polly or Julie or our events coordinator, could they get in touch with the events coordinators in the other municipalities? And see who they have consulted with, um, and what has actually led them to make the decision. Um, it would be unfortunate for Anmore to go ahead and do something that um, other communities have gotten advice. Is an undesirable thing to do at this moment in time.
And Nancy, that's why we followed the lead in regards to the fireworks even, we didn't want to be bringing people from other municipalities.
Exactly, exactly, that was.
Definitely do that, yeah.
A very wise decision, um, and is there someone else who has a question? Okay, you have a question, I'll come back then.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Okay, um, oh, are there any updates on the federal grant application for the community hub? I know we were waiting for uh, the election to, issues to have been completed.
Ms. Halliwell.
Uh, yes, the last we had heard is because the federal election was called, we were expecting to hear something mid-November, so I have not heard anything.
Nothing.
But hopefully, any day now.
Very good.
Thank you.
Bated breath.
First time people want us, Doug, and before you get started, we started the meeting, it, in the agenda, it said to start it at six-thirty. I was waiting till seven.
I fully admit, I did not read the small print.
Yeah, I didn't either, so.
I'm a bit shocked.
We waited till about quarter to seven before starting, because I, when you walked in, you kind of had a surprised look going, how could they be that efficient?
Small print, Doug Richardson, two three oh five East Road, so I'm sorry if this was covered in the part that I missed. In the five-year financial plan, the majority of everything that's, there's only actually one thing that's changed, which is capital, which is about a hundred and seventy K. And change, I'm assuming that's a flat deck trailer, a big old truck, and a hundred and twenty K or so for consultant, is that right?
That is accurate.
Has any of that money been spent so far?
No, it has not.
Truck has not been bought?
The truck is.
The truck has been purchased, yes.
Okay, so that kind of annoys me a little bit, because in July I stood up here three times, saying you can't do stuff, it's not in the five-year plan. And you guys told me all the time, you can completely do that, and then you told me to go to the community charter, and I read the community charter. It's not a very fun read, just to put it in there. And specifically, you reference in your paper, section one six five two, which you can amend your five-year plan at any time. But if you read down a little further, there's limit on expenditures, and you get to uh, one seven three dash one. And you may not make any expenditures unless it's included in the financial plan, or one seven three dash three. Which is, if there's an emergency, then you can't modify the five-year plan fast enough, buying the truck wasn't an emergency. Was it? Well, then, then you broke the law.
I don't know if you've got something to add here, Lena?
I would say, um, my understanding is that the amendment to the financial plan allows for the addition of the capital reserve transfer. For the truck, so the, what you're referencing to is if we didn't amend it, we wouldn't be able to do it.
No, 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 one seven three dash three, I suggest you read it, says you may make a purchase for an emergency purpose. Then you must immediately, right, as soon as you can amend the five-year plan.
I read that statement too, yes.
But you can only make the purchase in an emergency, there's no emergency here, you should have amended the five-year plan first. This is the way government works, and then major purchase, right, likewise, if you paid money to the consultant. Because that, that was back July as well, then that's also against the law, that's all, thank you.
So maybe I could just provide some clarification, what I had provided as a response back in July is that we are within the overall bylaw. For our purchasing expenditures, because we have underspent in other areas within our capital plan. We had the ability within the overall envelope to spend the money, now, because we do have expectation that we will be utilizing the rest of the funds. We are amending the bylaw to ensure that we are, we have the ability overall, once all of the expenditures are made. To, to have that capacity within our bylaw, and Ms. Martin, I'd be happy if you'd like to say otherwise, but that, you know, is, is my understanding. Of working within the overall financial plan bylaw, um, to stay within our authority. of working within the overall financial plan bylaw to stay within our authority.
I, I agree, we are within our authority. And one of the capital items was an adjustment due to pricing. As we know, COVID pricing has increased. The original flat duck.
6K.
Right.
Then you added 2.4.
It is now up to 15,000, because we are, Public Works was unable to find the flat duck that they needed for Public Works at that price.
I don't have an issue with the fact that the flat duck went up in price. What I have an issue with is you're spending money that's not in the five-year plan. And if it's going to be a capital item, and the five-year plans are specific for capital items, put it in there first. You have the complete right to redo it. Just follow the law. As, as I read it, now maybe, maybe I don't know how to read. It's very possible. Right? I, I didn't get here on time, so I totally missed stuff, right? But I, I would like things to be followed.
So they are being followed. We are working within an overall envelope for expenditures on an annual basis as a municipality.
But it doesn't say that in the community charter that you have an overall thing. And you can fluff around within the overall thing. It specifically says, if you have capital reserves, that it must be itemized and brought out specific to the capital reserves. You don't get to slush stuff around. This, this is my problem. Like, you're making the argument it's a slush fund. I'm saying it's not a slush fund.
That's not what we're saying all. It is not a slush fund. We are saying that we are operating overall within an amount, which is in the bylaw, which was adopted by council. Council then made the decision, within a lawful, regular council meeting, to make another purchase. And we were within our rights and our ability and our authority within the current bylaw before it's amended to make that purchase.
And there was, and, and there was a, a timing issue as well, because this was a liquidation from the Squamish Public Works Department in regards that we were able to pick this up for about $40,000, which was incredibly good value as it was about to be traded in. So I agree, it wasn't an emergency. However, there was some timing issues in regards to it. So anyway, next, anybody else have a?
Hi, my name's Ken Yuvik, 120 Lansing Crescent. At the November 2nd council meeting, a resident asked the village if they would specify a referendum for Anmore South. It was noted that council would consider this when and if a proposal was brought forward by the property owner. Okay? So my question's directed to each member of council and mayor. Don't you feel that the property owner is going to bring, is in the process of bringing forward a proposal by virtue of all this?
Mr. Yuvik, if I can, he actually, if you read the last agenda, there was actually a letter that we actually received and announced that they are planning on putting a thing at the end of this month.
Right, I'm, I'm aware of that letter.
Oh, okay, okay.
Well, but my question to, to you all is, why, why will you not consider a referendum now based on all the work that's being done by the, the, the property owner?
I, I can tell you, I've been sitting at this council table for probably 12 years. And I know you were sitting at it previous to that.
This isn't to do with me.
Please let me finish. And I can tell you that during that time, I've had probably three or four different proposals come, even to this point, and they just fizzle away. So until we see something tangible, I think it's really tough to have a referendum. I'm not adverse to having a referendum on, on it whatsoever. It's a significant change for our village. But I would like to have something that we have, actually, that we can have a vote on.
Personally, I, you know, I respect your answer. I find it insulting to, to myself and the residents, based on all this, the next steps, their vision, the future, the plant, the comprehensive consulting, the initial overtures by council earlier on, a year ago, and then that kind of fell off. And now the developers come forward to think that a proposal is not going to come forward? Anyways. Anybody else doesn't think a proposal's going to come forward?
Yeah, I got a question.
No, no one thinks a proposal's not coming forward, as far as I know. They've written us a letter saying a proposal's coming forward.
Well, then I would suggest it's time to have a referendum.
I think the, I think we want to see what the proposal is. We want to see what's being presented to us before we can have a referendum to know the questions that we will ask in the referendum.
Yeah, Mr. Yuvik, what questions would you ask of a referendum?
I don't have the wording for referendum tonight. I just know that there should be, there should be.
What's, I mean, we've got, we've got to know the wording before we could make a referendum, right? And you're suggesting a referendum without any wording. So give us the wording before we start. Right? We should get that from the public.
That's a silly question to me.
No, it's not.
It is.
Okay, let's, anyway, sorry. Thank you for your question.
That's my question.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public question, parents? Nope, you're first. You're next. Come on.
Round one.
Round one. Just. Please.
Dick Craswell, 1608 East Road. Have a couple of questions. I won't get caught in this bind again, because you won't get a dissertation, just a couple of questions.
Thank you.
And the first one is, are there any governing bodies or quasi-governing bodies, such as Metro, mandating the removal of the special study area designation for the Anmore South lands? That's the first question.
And I believe no.
I thank you for a categorical and short answer. I hope it's recorded. Secondly, have we received from a private or public company a request to remove the special study area designation or to change the current designation from rural to urban?
No, no.
Okay, thank you, again. Well, since we have no formal application to do anything, why do we spend so much time and energy and money on this issue now?
I don't necessarily think we're spending a lot of money at this point.
Well, we may not be spending a lot of money, but certainly, anything that has to do with staff and has to do with Anmore South, Icana, and so on, is our money.
Well, I would have to clarify, Mr. Craswell, as you are well aware, as being part of the Hillside Group and wanting to develop the Hillside, we have the same, we've had the same meetings with you as we would with any proponent. And it's the same, that's part of our job as a council, to be able to listen, and staff to be able to listen to what proposals were forward. We, what was it, two years ago, the Hillside people came forward with a fairly significant proposal that this council turned down.
Right, but there had nothing, that had nothing to do with the rezoning.
It certainly did.
And a redesignation, sorry, redesignation. It had to do with CD zoning, but it didn't have to do with a redesignation of a special study area.
Oh. Mr. Boyt.
Sorry, just want to go back to your first, second question about have we had.
Yep.
I would change the wording slightly. We were indicated by Metro Vancouver that they wanted to remove special study areas. And then they went to 2050, and now they kind of backtrack to something, because that's why we started the conversation back in March, because they wanted to perhaps remove the special study area and change the requirements of the land designation. So I would say, not officially, unofficially, there was conversations that maybe they want to remove the special designation.
Okay, let's go back to the first question then, because it has to do with a governing or a quasi-governing body mandating the removal. Is there, is there such a thing? I was told there isn't.
It is a mandate. It's because the whole 2050 is put together as a conglomerate of all the municipalities. And so they have to come to an agreement. So there is no official mandate. There's a thing that they all would like to see. And one of the things they were liking to see was to remove the gray area of a special study area. And there was pushback from, I think, not just from Anmore, but from other places to say.
Well, there's pushback and there's.
I would also add to that, which has been a very big conversation in the, in the media as of late, is the province getting involved, talking about overruling municipal jurisdiction on their land for housing. So that's something that is very concerning to me, and I'm watching it very carefully. I did comment, I think, to you on the phone, Minister Eby stepped in in Port Moody and did that with the Woodlands lands.
Yes.
And I am concerned about that here.
Yeah.
Very concerned.
I guess I have to zero in on this designation, special study area, and whether or not it's an open-ended kind of a thing now. I was of the, under the impression for a long time before last week, or the two weeks ago, that it had a, it had a lifespan of its own, but it apparently doesn't. That's what you're saying.
I, when I talked this morning to Ms. McNeil from Metro Vancouver, she said that it is in 2050.
Okay, so an agricultural analogy might be, it's, it's good until the cows come home. So it's open. It's just open. So I'm not quite sure why we should be fooling around with this right now and, and spending a lot of time and a lot of money. I have done something similar, because I've been asking for a referendum. But given that we haven't had an application. And we don't, we're only guessing that there will be an application. I mean, anything could happen. So there has not been an application, so there's been no, no request to change the designation yet. We're guessing. So why bother even talking about it until?
Good point.
Until there's an application.
I agree with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Just first, first time, yeah.
I just kind of wonder if there's a difference between a taxpayer point of view about what's a lot of money and what happens when you get into council, because I don't know if you're going to say, but how.
Is this a question?
Yes, my question's coming. I have a good question. We did have the Michelson Report, and it was quite comprehensive and well-done, and we paid for that. Was that not a lot of money that we spent on the question? About redesignating the Icana land or the Anmore South is.
The previous speaker was speaking about a development proposal, why we're spending money on that. That was two separate things.
I understood it was to do with the whole process. I'm sorry, I apologize, but my question still would be, how much did we spend on that?
I have to go back to look at the specific number.
I expect that no one would really know, but I suspect that, you know, we're talking about very skilled people who will be paid well for their time.
Okay, one, and then Nancy, and then Jody, and then Doug, okay? Two, yeah, please.
Again, Jubin Jalili, 1501 Crystal Creek. I was quite disappointed to see the reaction from the council tonight with respect to the climate resiliency plan for Metro Vancouver. Why not look at the half-full part of the glass? We don't need to redesignate Anmore. We don't need to densify Anmore.
Mr. Jupin, could I ask, be a question?
Yeah, there's a question. There's a question. We don't need to densify Anmore. We don't need to reclassify Anmore and then say, okay, now we're going to deal with climate action plan. Why not taking the same approach like other municipalities? Why not taking approaches such as mandating passive house certification? We just noticed today that, you know, a couple of lots were, were basically given go-ahead to have infill. Why not, you know, adding incentive to build passive house buildings to, for the, for the buildings to reduce their carbon footprint? Why does it have to be, you know, through doing a big, massive project and then think about environment? Until, you know, we have that kind of approach, unfortunately, we will experience the wild acts of nature that happened yesterday. So we need to act now, and we don't need to look at our neighbor municipality to take action because we are rural, we can't do anything. No, there's lots that can, can be done within the rural designation.
Do you have a question, please? Okay, please, let's.
Just in response to that, the municipality is taking steps towards that. And there's a thing called a step code analysis regarding energy consumption of buildings. And so far, we have taken steps to increase our code requirements, and more will be coming subsequently. So that is something the municipality needs to do.
Ms. Maloney.
Nancy Maloney, 1724 East Road. And I actually have one more money question, but on a different topic. So something I'm curious about, is the village having to pay the person that the village wanted to hire to manage the construction of the hub? Is the village having to pay that person a retainer pending the ability to actually start building the hub? Like, are we spending money?
We're not spending any money until he, he does any work, so he's paid for the hours that he works.
He'll be paid, like, by the hour?
He'll be paid for the hours that he works, yes. So we have a budget approved of up to $120,000.
I remember that.
Yeah, and he will invoice us as the project moves along, as he works hours.
Hours. Okay, thank you. Very good.
And then?
So Jody Summers Cook, 1660 East Road. So Mayor McEwen, as you remember, I've asked about having a public forum, i.e. at the school rented hall, when the three scenarios for the development for Anmore South comes, comes in. I believe two meetings ago, you mentioned that perhaps you would be doing two separate workshops? And then, correct? And then at the, at the last meeting, two weeks ago, you mentioned a Zoom possibility, possibility of doing a Zoom meeting. Now, I'm hoping that the Zoom meeting would be in addition or concurrent with a meeting?
Yeah, so we were hoping to have that report released tonight, but we ran into some logistical issues last week with Remembrance Day. I'm hoping actually to have a special council meeting next week where we can release the report with all the final, again, we have different consultants involved with JP Rolle that have caused just some scheduling issues and that. So once we release the report, we'll make arrangements in regards to having, and it won't, it's not per se a meeting, it's going to be just an information session, so.
Okay.
It will not be hosted by council.
Okay, and it won't be on Zoom, because there's a lot of longtime people.
Again, I'm not certain at that.
Lot of longtime, older people, and I'm not good at Zoom either, that won't be able to participate in that if we were to just have, quote, just a Zoom meeting, so.
And I've heard from many people that they don't feel comfortable going to a school in a, in a group meeting either. So, you know, there's going to have to be a balance here, Ms. Cook, and we'll figure it out after next Tuesday's, hopefully next Tuesday's meeting.
Thank you.
Again, Doug, 2305 East Road. Quick questions. I like Dick the way he asks them. How much did the report cost Anmore? Since you wrote it, you must know.
I do not. That was back in the spring when I did the billing, so I honestly do not know.
I think it was about 20K. How much is the engineering report we're going on right now? 40?
Yeah, the weather was authorized up to 20K.
Okay, so we're 40K in. And as a taxpayer, that's a lot of money. And that is only for the rural, urban designation. And yes, you can have a referendum on rural, urban designation.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, last question then, okay.
Back to your comment, step code is not applicable to single-family houses.
Pardon? Yes, it is. Sorry, it is. Anyway, yeah. Motion to adjourn. Moved, seconded, all those in favor, Karen Yes. Thank you, everybody, for coming out, and please, we will make notice if there is going to be a meeting next Tuesday.
And read the small print, Nick.
Yeah.